And said, let's turn this into a lease agreement, because that's really what it should be. And let's take a look at that and let's modernize this agreement. So we got Patrick involved. And fortunately Eric Benny, he's on their board. And so he got involved. So the two attorneys, this is what we came up with. It's extremely similar to what it was. It's just, it's modern and it's in the right format now, so. But it's a 15-year agreement that's renewable to five-year terms upon people agreeing. And like I said, society played a major part in putting this together. So there wouldn't be opposition either way.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions?
I didn't see any reading through it, so.
Okay, all right. Onto the next, we have a public hearing, consideration of plans and specifications for 2018 parking lot improvements.
Hi, Jesse, City Engineer. Eric has some slides. So the first one we're going to talk about is parking lots. Maybe we have slides. The first lot we'll talk about is at Sixth and Washington. Here's the project locations. The two lots we're talking about today are Sixth and Washington up to the top left, and then Main and Valley bottom right. Project scopes for both of these. Main and Valley is pictured at the bottom. And basically, it will be expanded to the south where those buildings were recently demolished here. It'll add about 22 spaces to that lot. And I think primarily it'll be for PD parking. And it extends some storm drainage to the south of the lot, just to handle that portion that we're extending it. The Washington and Sixth lot is basically a resurfacing project. As we got into it, we noticed we did have a storm intake that was tied into our sanitary system. So you'll see here, it's a fair amount over budget. And we'll talk about that in a second. But it'll replace the existing light there with an LED light and kind of regrade the lot, so it's not as rough getting in and out of there. I don't know if you guys have parked in there, but it's a pretty significant bump as you come in. But that's it for those two. On to the budgets. Main and Valley, we are a little bit over, but generally the estimate numbers I use are a touch high, so we might be all right on Main and Valley. Again, that's the one, you know, that will be for primarily PD parking. The Sixth and Washington, it's a whole nother story. Like I said, we, I think we found about $40,000 to $50,000 worth of storm-related repair. So we're hoping it comes in less, but as you can see, it's quite a bit over. To help with the process, we initially had planned on doing complete concrete replacement, but we are giving them an asphalt alternative. So hopefully, we can get something closer to the budgeted cost. And Jim, I don't know if you have anything to add on the budgets or how we would cover a shortfall?
One of the things that does drive the cost up is on the stormwater side. We can't at least have a discussion about whether we use stormwater or sewer funds to pay that portion of the cost.
Yeah, well, that would-
And it's something that that or the only other real spot that I can say that we have some flexibility is still, we do receive a significant sum of money at this budget year. It's just you can only use that in so many different directions.
What did you say you thought the tentative cost was on the sewer portion of it? Did you say that, Jesse?
Around 40.
A 40?
Which may get it to where we have an alternative that gets us within our overall costs once we get to the end of this.
How's that fund looking right now?
This is funded, the sewer fund?
Yeah.
I mean, the sewer fund has-
It took a hit with the project we had over by too valued, didn't it, with those costs?
We use a miscellaneous sewer rehab account for that. And we basically move money from the regular sewer account over to that fund to cover those costs. And this is the kind of thing that you could say is exactly what that fund is supposed to be used for. It's just, yeah, how much do you have in any given year? We try to do about $300,000. Did we do 300,000 or 500,000 for next year, Stephanie? Do you remember? So, I mean, after July 1, you could tentatively look at, I mean, this is a project that's going to go from one year to the next, I would assume.
Yep.
And we can look at that coming out of the next year's portion of that.
Okay. I'm not sure how to handle this, Jim, but the mayor is watching us, and he just sent me a text. Hi, Mayor.
Way back.
He was, is it all right to ask a question that he sends in? I'm not sure the hell that-
What's the question?
He was going to ask you about-
Then they'll tell you if it's all right or not.
I'm going to have problems with this word, permeable pavement. Are there grants available for that, and is that something we can use?
At this point, it would be hard to work into it. The permeable would cost a little bit more, but, you know, if we delayed it, maybe it would be something we could look at.
I think that we may have even looked at a permeable paving project on this at-
About 40% increase in concrete.
Forty as in four zero?
Yes. So, and the grants that we would have been able to go after to get wouldn't have really covered the cost of the increase. It'd have helped to pay for the cost, but they wouldn't have covered the cost.
Nick wants to-
Jesse, did you say how many additional slides to Sixth and Washington?
Sixth and Washington is just resurfacing, so it really doesn't add any-
Oh, okay. It's not adding any additional-
The major thing that, other major thing it does is this entryway into it.
Yeah, it's really rough right now. There's a bump there to where we're taking that out.
And that's one of the significant things that's, I mean, for a cost driver, that's one of the significant cost drivers on that. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you.
One of the reasons why we ruled out permeable pavement early on was because of, one, the cost, but two, in case we wanted to go up with an upper deck, putting an upper deck on top of permeable pavement rules out the purpose of the permeable pavement below. And at least with concrete, you can make the appropriate saw cuts and go down and establish your foundations for whatever piling you would need.
I have a question for you. Can you explain to me on the south side of the lot, Main and Valley, what that's going to look like? Is there going to be entrance and exit on the south side of that lot? Is there going to be a barrier between the parking lot and the railroad tracks? Is the drive that continues, because if you pull up to that railroad crossing, you could almost, you could take a right and drive through there currently. Is that going to be blocked off? What's that going to look like?
Right. On the south side there, if you look at other parts of the lot, there's kind of a raised median between that lot and the alley. And that's the same thing we're doing all around. So there's no access out of the south. And the main reason for that is, you know, we could put it in, but we're trying to cut costs as much as we could here. There's still building foundation in that area, and we would have to take some of that out. And then the adjacent street just to the south, I took a picture of it with my boot. The concrete's displaced, you know, three to six inches in spots, so it's really rough. And tying into that line was going to be difficult without extending, you know, another couple hundred square foot of pavement. So it would have been-
And what kind of barriers going to be there? Is it just going to be the median, or is there going to be a wall there?
Just raised median. So like a six-inch curb with a back to it and raised into the alley, too.
Isn't there a wall that extends on the east side of that?
On the east side of budding Main Street, there is a brick wall on that side. And I think it was actually potentially part of the building, but I'm not for sure on that. But yeah, there is a brick wall there now. Further towards the south side, it goes away and turns into the same type of median curb-type style that we were planning on going around with.
So the wall won't continue to the south?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right.
One last question. So these parking lots are part of our parking plan as far as the way they're going to be marked and signage and all that?
Correct.
Okay, cool.
What would it cost to put a barrier on the south side? Would it be considerably more?
Like a wall?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're looking at fairly considerably more.
Footings and then going as high as-
Well, we could use the existing footings that were there for the building and put it on. But how you'd go about doing it, whether you did something decorative or concrete, it could get pricey.
So one of the things that was brought to me was the potential for using that space there as a medium for art or artistic ability. It was something that's been done in other communities where they'll use, and I saw one in another Iowa community, where they used a six-foot concrete wall to partition between a railroad track and a parking lot. But they opened that wall up to the public for them to come and paint on. And they were murals, and some people would paint on them every few days, and some people would paint on them every few months. And you all had this constantly evolving wall that provided an outlet for people to paint on, basically, and draw them away from that. So I always, somebody that is associated with the art clinic down here brought that to my attention and said that would be a good spot, and I agreed with them. So I just wanted to ask the question, what kind of increased cost would that be? Is there grants out there that we could use in order to encourage that? Is that something that would even be possible?
Well, and it really is still something we could add on, because we're tying right into those foundations. So just making sure we would place the wall above those foundations would be what we'd have to worry about there. But, you know, maybe we could work up some costs for you on potential. I'm, you know, not going to shoot something off here.
Sure, yeah, no, that's fine.
Looking into it a little bit and kind of do some details.
I figured I'd ask since we're on the topic, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's something I can put together for you guys.
All right, thanks.
You're talking about the south side. This is what the design of that Main and Valley looks like.
Yeah, so it would just be on that?
I would caution, there is some, the Market Street section of road is in pretty poor shape. I actually looked, we've tried to look at, try and get that fixed at the same time, but we didn't have the availability to get that fixed. There is also the potential that future storm and sanitary work will be going on in that area on the Market Street side. There's an intake in the middle of the alleyway, correct?
Right.
So that would have to be disconnected from the storm according to our current consent order.
So we don't want to do work and then tear it out in 10 years to redo it? So that doesn't make sense?
And that's the main reason we stayed out of the alley.
I like the way you're thinking, though, about the mural projects. My concern is that for already over budget, and maybe you're looking at adding more probably isn't feasible.
That's why I wanted to say that it was going to be a future possibility.
But I have seen them in other cities, and they are nice.
All right, anything else? Okay, next we have a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 Mount Pleasant Street HMA overlay.
All right. We have slides for this one, too. All right, so project location. Basically, we will be milling and then laying new asphalt in the area. You can see there. It might not be too easy to see, but basically, we're going from Gear Avenue in West Burlington all the way to Highway 61. So that's basically where we'll be. Next slide kind of shows what we'll be doing. And again, the pavement areas from Gear Avenue to Highway 61. The, one of the more significant aspects of this is we're doing a lane reconfiguration. That's how we proposed it in the grant that we got for this. It's 80% funded by federal funds, so I'll get into that a little bit more later. So that lane reconfiguration does support our complete streets policy, and there will be bike lanes. So it'll be a little bit of a change in that area, but again, that's what we had in the grant. The sidewalk and pedestrian ramps will be provided at all applicable intersections throughout the project. And then we are extending some sidewalk on the south side of the road from Cottage Grove Avenue to Highway 61 to, again, promote that complete streets outlook on things. There are a significant amount of intake tops that are going to need to be modified as part of this project, so you don't have bike tires going in those non-bike safe grates. And we just have some, generally, intakes and poor disrepair in that area anyway. So those are all getting replaced and lifted so that they aren't an issue for the bikes. The next slide kind of shows a little bit more about that lane reconfiguration. The folks in the Federal Highway Administration and state like to call these road diets, but we kind of figured that was a little confusing for everybody. So we're kind of trying to use the lane reconfiguration just so, you know, there's no confusion with it. But you can see the before and after. We're basically exactly those dimensions out on Mount Pleasant Street. Right now, it's four 11-foot wide lanes. It'll be converted to two 5-foot bike lanes, two 11-foot lanes, and then a center turn lane for both directions. Again, we did get STBG money for basically doing this, citing safety reasons and some other things. So we're kind of married to this at this point in the game.
So STB money stands for what? Sorry.
Yeah, Surface Transportation Block Grant.
Thank you.
Yep. The, in 2010, just some statistics. So Nick gave you a bunch of packets that give all this information plus a little bit more in case you guys get any questions on it, so you can be informed with people. But there's been a lot of studies on these. And, you know, some people might say that, you know, it's too busy of a street to go down to two lanes. Well, there's different parts of the country that do these all the way up to, I want to say like 200,000 or 25,000 cars per day. And we're looking at about 6,000 average on Mount Pleasant Street. So they say that we're a perfect candidate for doing it, and it should increase the safety pretty measurably. Again, in that 2010 study that was done by the Federal Highway Administration, the average project in Iowa was a little over a mile, and I think we're 1.4 here. The average ADT was around 8,000. Again, we were closer to 6. And what they were looking at in safety improvements was crashes per mile went from just about 24 down to just about 12. So it halved the incident rate from a safety perspective. The other thing that I'm sure we'll hear a lot about is, you know, it's going to slow down traffic, this, that, and the other. Again, there's some pretty good literature in those handouts we gave you. The general trip times were very minimally affected in a mile. They were talking under 30 seconds type of stuff. And the one thing it did do was curb the excessive speeders, which they found that the instances of speeding over 5 mile an hour were usually cut by almost 70%. So it's a good thing from a safety perspective. It's just change, so.
Can't go faster, John.
Any questions about the concept before we go into the budget, or?
I don't like it.
No, I think it really encourages people to, you know, get out and, one, be healthier and, two, be able to travel to places safely. You know, I rode my bike for a while throughout town, and it can be very scary if there's no bike lane.
Well, quite honestly, some of those sections of Mount Pleasant are crowded with four cars. I mean, I'm in favor of doing this. It would make a lot of sense.
So the next slide does show our pedestrian bicycle plan. And I just, we've talked about this on a couple occasions before. I just wanted to put the slide up. This is the proposed network when they did the study back in 2013. So it's, again, kind of a hard one to see, sorry about that. But you can see the Mount Pleasant, they were proposing bike lanes or shared shoulders all the way out to Gear Avenue. So at some point, when we look at the rest of Mount Pleasant, we'll probably be looking to do this same type of approach. Project summary on this one is a little bit more rosy than the parking lot. The grant amount was 1.7 million. Our estimated costs for this are 1.275. Federally funded portion is just over a million. And then we did have a split with us in West Burlington on this. They have slightly more of the project area in their corporate limits. So their portion of the match on this is a little bit more than ours. We are kind of getting this in front of you guys a little bit early, but we just kind of, we're hoping to get it out of the way since the plans are done. We don't have the DOT letting until June 19, which is a little bit later than we were hoping to be. But, you know, we got to go through the DOT on this, and it's letting aims. So we had to jump through a few hoops to get it out there. We will be awarding the contract on July 3, starting in July, and hopefully buttoning everything up by the end of the year.
Can you go back to where, where does it start?
Yeah.
From? Okay.
So just on the other side of South Gear Avenue, we'll be configuring some lanes, making the southernmost lane a right turn only, and then merging everybody back into two lanes of traffic heading westbound. And then we'll have to do some merge in and out, you know, over by 61 as well.
All right, very good. Any other?
No questions?
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property locally known as 333 Kern Street from R2 Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District. Anything to add?
No changes from the previous reading. Again, just rezoning based on the applicant or owner's request. He's planning to demolish the structure and market it as a commercial site.
Anybody have anything, any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. Number six, we have the preliminary adoption of a second reading of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to the standard penalty application to certain sections of the code and violations thereof.
No changes.
No changes. Any other concerns or questions from you guys?
Either of those ordinances, were you interested in waiving the second and going to the third reading?
Possibly on number five, if that's-
Is there any reason why we wouldn't do both of them?
It's up to you.
Right.
I mean, I don't see any reason why we couldn't unless somebody in the crowd objects or somebody- I guess that would, would that depend? We did have an objection to one of them last week, so.
Yes, that was number six.
So it would probably-
I have no issue with it, but I, I don't know.
I would have no issue with waiving.
Waiving both of them?
Yep. I don't either.
Will we irritate somebody because they might want to talk about it next week, or no?
Well, we'll still have a chance to talk about it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and do both of those. Waive both of those. All right, number seven, we have a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the east side of the 800 block of South Star Street.
Good evening. I have a resolution in front of you guys establishing a no parking zone. There was a request to extend a no parking zone on South Star. If you would zoom out a little bit, maybe, to try and give a perspective of what it really is. Core School is hidden behind that blue and green squares in there. Currently, there is a no parking zone during school hours from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM in the red stretch between, I don't, Williams and, I don't know the, right, just immediately to the west of where Core School is. And then, so the extended area that staff is recommending would go from just further southwest Avenue. It's currently a 27-foot wide street.
So that green section, thank you, Eric.
Correct, that's the requested area. It's probably a little hard to see darkness-wise. That is the extension that staff is recommending. It's 27, 27-foot wide road. With two lane, or two cars parked on either side, it restricts access pretty greatly, so.
Yes.
We sent out letters over a week ago, so.
Do we have any objections to any of that?
We haven't received any back, but we did let them know that the council meeting will be next week. This is on the regular agenda, so if they're opposed to it, to come and do that then, so. Any questions?
Sounds good. No, I know that's a pretty narrow street in general, so.
And it's pretty heavy traffic during isolated timeframes.
Definitely. Any other questions, concerns? All good? Okay. Next, we have a resolution approving installation of two-way stop signs at the intersection of Dodge Street and South 14th Street.
This is an updated exhibit from the packet. For some reason, I did not decide to go to the right intersection. It was South 14th, but it was Hedge. It still ended in DGE, but it had a couple letters in the middle that were, that were wrong. So after taking a look at it, we, for stop sign installation, we go through a warranting process, which is average daily traffic load, traffic accidents within a 10-year timeframe beforehand, and then site distance. This only triggered one of the warrants, and that was site distance. Site distance is greatly reduced because of trees that are immediately adjacent to the intersection. There were two accidents within the last 10 years. That isn't enough to trip the warrant process. But because of the greatly reduced site distance, it's my recommendation to install two stop signs to stop north and southbound traffic on South 14th.
So the trees that are there, then Nick, they don't impede where the stop signs are going to be? They just impede the line of sight long range?
Correct.
Okay.
We can't give those trees a haircut?
They're past the haircut stage. Well, there are things that you probably could do to cut the under, haircut's not a technical term, is it? There's also a porch that kind of distorts visibility as well.
All right. Sounds good, thank you. Number nine, we have a resolution of the City of Burlington, Iowa approving the application of Frank Millard and Company for the purpose of receiving benefits under the State of Iowa's Targeted Jobs Withholding Tax Credit Program and initiating agreements relative to the program.
That is quite a mouthful, isn't it?
It is.
Hi, my name's Jeremy Hess. Good evening, Council. I'm with the Greater Burlington Partnership, just here to seek this resolution of support for Frank Millard Companies. They're seeking to expand their existing manufacturing facility at 107 Valley. So they're building that they have almost filled up the entire block. They would put a small expansion, about 6,000 square feet on that building. So the project itself is 2.2 million. The application that they have filled out proposes a projected 50 new jobs, so 50 positions, all of those to exceed $30 an hour. So these are skilled, really great-paying jobs. It's an exciting project, just the makeup of what they're doing. So it's not a huge building expansion. It's more of an in-house 12 to 1400 square foot virtual laboratory. They have signed an exclusive agreement with a gentleman, the inventor of what's called a cavitation unit, which is way more science than I took in school. And so essentially, it's in nature, that process happens at the bottom of a huge waterfall where the turbulence and those kinds of things enable the water to clean itself. But that all happens in a very small confined space in a unit that would sit right in front of you, right here. The different applications for it are really kind of mind-blowing. It's very exciting stuff. Essentially, they're able to take whatever dirty input from one end that comes from, whether it's an industrial, a food-grade processor or something like that, to nasty lake water, just about anything that has contaminants in the water goes through this combust, this cavitation unit, and it comes out clean on the other end. And so it's just, it's an amazing thing. The applications for it are almost endless. Could change the way we do things in our business, just where we would be able to put manufacturing facilities and so forth, that we don't have to drag 12, 15, 30 million dollars worth of infrastructure to clean the water. So it's really, really a neat project. And at this point, the targeted jobs withholding tax credits, it's with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And so there's no financial match necessarily needed from the city. So we're not coming, they're not coming and asking for any funds. Just part of that application has a letter of support from the council and the mayor. I'm happy to answer any questions, as long as they don't delve into the science too much.
I have one. Where, you said there's going to be a small addition to the existing building. Where is that going to go?
That will go on the- That will go on the southeast corner of, there's a, currently a, a, a little bit of space for parking.
Southeast corner?
Nope, nope.
Southwest corner.
Southwest corner, yeah, my bad.
Okay.
So, where the receiving dock is right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then where's the clean water gonna go? I'm assuming dirty water's gonna be trucked in?
Yeah, so, the, the virtual lab is so that they can test these, these products for other people, they'll, the, the folks would, currently, they're having to move all that stuff to Canada and go through customs and all that, so, so they bring that in here, it's in basically five-gallon buckets, they come in with their dirty water, they run it in the lab, people can either attend physically or through the virtual lab, they run it through the process, and then they go through and do their analysis and testing, and then they take their water back with them when they leave. In, in this scenario here, this lab that they're, they're building, so, some of this is in a lab, the other part that, that they're doing inside the facility is they're going to actually manufacture these units here in their facility.
And then those will be installed in off-site facilities to clean the water?
Yes, correct.
Alright.
Could we use one of those in place of our sewer plant?
Right?
They could tell you some of the things that they, you know, like what we're doing out at Geode State Park where they're draining the lake, they've got a lake in Florida where they have basically taken a lake that's about four times the size of Geode and sucked that thing through that machine, churned up the water, and spit out clean water in it in about six months. So, yeah, the, the applications are pretty mind-blowing as far as the ability to reuse the water, so...
State of Iowa...
Talk to the boys at Frank Millard, Jim, they'll probably hook you up.
A lot to see about that. Um, there is a, an impact on us, it's, it's one that we do on a lot of other projects as well, that's, I assume involves the quarterly payroll, so our staff has to, has to work with their HR people and, uh...
To verify.
To verify all information and make sure the middles go to the state correctly, and the payments for that flow through us from the state back to them. So, it will be on our books, but it's not a, a cost item to the city, it, it is time-wise for our accounting staff.
But we're already doing that for a couple of other entities right now, so...
This is a great project.
Go Millards, go! As far as I'm concerned.
Great, alright, what else?
Is that on the consent agenda?
No. Alright, next we have a resolution approving agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa, and the Burlington, West Burlington area Chamber of Commerce for hotel-motel tax distribution.
Hello, Chelsea LaRue, Executive Director, Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm gonna start off with a little bit of two thousand seventeen history, kind of some of what our projections are for the next few years, and then Jason will take over from there and talk about our new contract proposal. Uh, so, as I'm sure you're aware, we did a massive remodel at the Port of Burlington Welcome Center in two thousand seventeen, we took an old nineteen-eighties feel and vibe, the building really hadn't gone through much remodel at all the entire time it had been open and operating as a welcome center, into a brand-new, fresh, modern feel, we did the concrete floors through the partnership with the city, and we now have new display cases with better lighting, that display case right there in the front, we're treating that as a display case of the month, so local businesses are able to purchase the spot for a minimal fee and kind of promote themselves however they want, we have an average of a thousand visitors that come through the Welcome Center every month, so it's really great foot-traffic for them, I should say visitors and residents, since we are a main ticket box office for the civic music events, so lots of residents do come in there as well. I absolutely love the new Welcome Center, I think it's just clean and modern, we can update the displays on a more regular basis, and just kind of change them out however we want. My favorite feature is the, the seating piece there, just because it kind of brings a little bit of snake alley into the Welcome Center as well. Two thousand seventeen, the CVB had their hands on just over forty-six thousand visitors attracted to the area, these could be visitors that came because of events that we supported through grant dollars, maybe we helped write the bid proposal to get the event or the conference here to the area, we might have provided welcome bags to them, community information materials, those sorts of things, the American Queen passengers are included in those numbers, and of course, Fireball Run and our Ripley celebrations as well included in those. We know these visitors stay for just shy of two days, so we're kind of that quick-weekend destination for people, but they did contribute over forty-six hundred hotel room nights to the area, which brings an estimated economic impact of eight-point-six million dollars. We mailed our community guides out all over the world, to, I think it was twenty-five different countries last year, based on the different ad placements that we place through print and digital, we had just shy of thirteen thousand visitors at the Welcome Center and just shy of twenty-four thousand digital page views of our community guide, our biggest community, or biggest cities that are viewing the guide are Burlington, so people while they're here looking for things to do, and then surprisingly, Iowa City, not surprisingly, I guess, but then Dallas, Texas, is really high up there along with Cedar Rapids and Galesburg, so, getting a, kind of that fifty-to-eighty mile radius that we do target on many of our advertising. Two thousand sixteen, economic impact of travel numbers, just a reminder, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, so the Iowa Tourism Office runs these numbers every year with US Travel Association, and they're about a year behind, so two thousand sixteen numbers came in great at a hundred-and-thirty-six-point-four million dollars in visitor expenditures, and visitors helped drive over nine million dollars in state and local taxes. Des Moines County does continue to be ranked thirteenth of the ninety-nine counties in Iowa. But then, when you look at fiscal year seventeen hotel-motel tax collections, you will see that those numbers are starting to come back down and soften after our recent major construction projects in the area that kind of unnaturally inflated all of those expenditures and hotel stays, occupancy, all of that in the area, so we are starting to see that soften come down, fiscal year seventeen was an eleven-point-five percent decrease over fiscal year sixteen. But we are still at about a twenty-five percent increase over fiscal year thirteen, so pre-major construction projects, we, we are still seeing an increase there. Uh, as I kind of alluded to, occupancy in two thousand seventeen did drop down to fifty-five-point-nine percent for the year, year-over-date, and we're, after many conversations with partners in the area, we're noticing that a lot of the Recplex numbers are down as well, and we're kind of attributing that to the construction projects because hotel rooms were so hard to find during that time, the teams just kind of replaced us on their schedules, they are creatures of habit, so when they couldn't find a room for one year, they found a new tournament and haven't come back yet, so we have been working with our local partners, how can we brainstorm to bring new events to the area, or help bolster the new tournaments, reach back out to these teams that used to come here? One of the things that we have done is create an invitational-only tournament for a softball event, we've, working with a local event organizer that's researched top-notch Iowa, Illinois, and Missouri teams to get some of that top-quality play back here, to get some competition back for the teams, they are getting to play a free tournament at the Recplex in return for our requirement of them staying at least one night in one of our area hotels. So far, we have fifteen teams that are registered in a month that registration's been open, St. Louis, Galesburg, Kansas, or, excuse me, Kansas City area, St. Charles area, Chicago, Bloomington-Normal, so they definitely are coming from a distance to experience our area. We want to not only just give them a tournament, but an experience while they're here in the community, so that they think of us again moving forward. So, that kind of alludes to our two thousand eighteen strategy moving forward, we're kind of taking the focus of youth and amateur sports are kind of our niche in this area, so let's focus and bolster our niche, and the other types of visitors will come because of that as well. So, not only are we increasing our sports marketing, we are working on a sports market study, trying to determine what is that saturation rate out there, what things are other communities doing that we can start doing here as well to create those visitor experiences. We heard a lot from local teams that booking hotel rooms for large blocks isn't always the easiest, so we have just recently signed contracts for a new consolidated housing bureau software, so now when teams are booking their rooms, they can see all of the hotels that are participating in that block and book from one hotel site, and one person can do it for the entire team, so we're getting excited to get that up and running here soon. And just continuing to learn from our area event organizers and seeing where the CVB can help bolster some of their efforts, and we can just work better as a team together. And, we are really excited to announce tomorrow at our press conference that we have signed a three-year contract to host a Gus Macker here in Burlington, so we will be the very, or, excuse me, we'll be the only Iowa tournament in two thousand eighteen, and we're going to host it right on the Mississippi Riverfront, in the parking lot between the auditorium and the port, and Gus Macker, the owner himself, will be here tomorrow, kind of doing a site visit and looking through everything, will be doing our press conference and announce and everything, they are super excited to be playing on the Riverfront. And I will share with you, Peoria has hosted a tournament historically, but this will be their second year, they have not, so we're pretty confident that we can attract a lot of those teams that used to play in Peoria, and Quincy has also had very successful tournaments for the last twenty years, that we can attract many of those teams as well. So, I guess, any questions on that information before I hand it over?
I do. The block site, hotel booking stuff, is that just designed for teams coming into the area, or can that technology also be used, say, for concerts or any of the other stuff?
It can be used for any event that has hotel room blocks, and so how it works is we create, basically, we're building websites for every single event that's coming to the area, and those participants are get a unique URL, and that's where they're booking from there. We're starting with a select few events at the Recplex, just to try it out and get our hands in it, and then we'll go larger as we're more comfortable with it. Alright, with that, I'll hand it to Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Jason Hutchison, with Greater Burlington Partnership, so included in your packet today is a, a tentative contract or agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I think you're aware that the Chamber of Commerce operates the Convention and Visitors Bureau via a contract, we have a contract for service with you, and we also have a contract for service with, with West Burlington, and so, i-in that case, we act as a, as a vendor to the city, so to speak, that we do tourism services for a, a fee, which via contract is set according to a, a percentage amount, and so, the CVB itself is not an incorporated entity, the contract is really with the Chamber of Commerce, and then we operate a CVB according to the terms of the agreement. So, we've tended to do three-year agreements, and so what we're bringing forward to you is a, is another three-year agreement, and, you know, eh, eh, there's always a struggle with when it's time to put an agreement together, how should we handle the financial arrangement? And, and three years ago, we generally agreed, I'm not sure we were in love with it, but we were generally agreeable to a reduction in the percentage, simply acknowledging some of the budgetary challenges that, that you all face, and so, when it came time for this renewal, we thought long and hard about, you know, especially in looking at the numbers, you know, how should, how should we approach this with you, should we attempt to build those percentages back up, or, or should we keep them where they are, and, and we're looking at ways of, of kind of restrategizing in the CVB to make sure that we're capturing our share of the youth sports market, but at the end of the day, we decided to come forward with you with an agreement that essentially matches what it was three years ago from a percentage basis, and so, obviously, as hotel-motel tax improves, then the revenue that, that we participate in grows, but if it shrinks, then the revenue that we receive shrinks as well, and so, so changes to the agreement from last time it came before this body is, there's a, a base amount, so it's thirty percent of the first seven-hundred-thousand, although in year one, that would be six-hundred-seventy-five-thousand, i-in an attempt to reimburse the city for some expenses that it had last year, and then forty percent of the revenue above seven-hundred-thousand. The other change that we made is in section three under Steering Committee, we just clarified that West Burlington has a seat on the Steering Committee as well, with, that was not in the former, it wasn't specific in the former agreement, and I want to thank our city manager for pointing that out, then, under the term, what happens if, in the future, we cannot reach an agreement, what happens if, if we don't come to terms? Because we operate because you have faith in that, and should that ever change at some point in time, there may not be an agreement between the two entities, and so, what should happen to money that exists as part of the CVB? So, over time, we have diversified the revenue sources that the CVB receives, we have, we are the custodian of destination fee dollars that the hotels are participating in, we were a Ticketmaster outlet down at the, at the Welcome Center, while Venue Works was operating the auditorium, there are some fees that are charged when tour groups come in and we provide tour guides, and so, there's, eh, eh, revenue from the city is not our only revenue source, but it is the largest single source, and so, what happens if we no longer have a contract with the city, under term in number eight, what we would suggest is that if we could not come to a terms, that, that cash that still exists in the bank upon the expiration of the term would go to an endowed fund with the Community Foundation of Des Moines County, so that principle gets set aside and protected for quality-of-life initiatives, in a sense, in, into perpetuity for the community, and so that's, that's a new element, and that's what my recommendation would be, hopefully we never have to use that clause, but in case, in case we do. So, that's the presentation of the, of the contract, and I, I, the mayor is watching, and so I am supposed to remind everyone how awesome our mayor is and how good-looking he is, so...
Funny, he just said the same thing about you. Actually, what the mayor said, verbatim, is that, da-da-da-da, as for, and for the record, you can state it, I'm very satisfied with the agreement and to continue work as written in the work packet. I do want to say, I do want to say that they've been very good, and they have done a phenomenal job of working with us, so that's the mayor, and it's a little bit jumbled, because I think he must be taking some back pain pills, but...
And if he disagreed with it, just blame it on his pain meds, so...
But I, I would, I would echo those statements, I, I, I'm very satisfied with the, the benefit that we get out of the, our arrangement with CVB and the chamber.
Has there ever been a city where it has went south and they had to disband?
Sure, sure, yep, that, that does happen, and it's, it's happened in communities in Iowa, and generally, when that, that occurs, is, you know, cities are in a difficult budget predicament, and, and they, they see that as an easy way to make a budget meet for that, for that isolated year, but in almost all cases when that happens, even though there's good intention, maybe for the city to take tourism services in-house or marketing in-house, that is, as we've observed, at least in Iowa, that doesn't tend to go very well, and so, we think that the arrangement has worked.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Can you think of a city, can you name a city where they tried this in it?
Yeah, I, I believe that this occurred in Fort Madison a number of years ago, and also in Muscatine, so those are two close cities where that has occurred historically. I don't know what they're doing today, but I know that's happened in the past, and Mount Pleasant did some of that as well, not to the same degree as the other two.
I would echo the same thing, I think the services that your interest supervisor invaluable, and more than happy to continue this, in fact, I'd like to see the relationship between the city and the partnership become more stronger, strengthened from where it is today, so, I think there's some ground to be made up, but I'm happy with it.
Don't be nervous, I'm, I just was wondering if someone had done, because I, I don't envision it working very well, that's why I was picking your brain, but not that I was contemplating doing it, Jason.
I understand.
Alright, great, anything else? Thank you.
Did you have anything on it, Jim?
No.
Alright, sounds good. Uh, next we have the proposed consent agenda, number one is a resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for higher license for Dennis Charles mains doing business as Yellow Cab Transportation. All good? Alright, anything for you guys?
No questions.
Alright, number two, we have a resolution to establish a new fee schedule for special events.
This was a, a change based on our, our current special event fees, this has been somewhat confusing for some of the applicants as well as staff, there's quite a few different categories and add-ons for application fee, park reservation fee, large event fee, rental fee, delivery fee, and this is attempt to incorporate a lot of that into the base fee, especially with barricades and whether it's a park or a event, not in the city park, just clarifying that, so, when you factor in all the different add-ons, the fees will, will not go up significantly, it'll be pretty similar, for example, a special event fee was twenty-five dollars, and then park reservation was seventy-five, rental and delivery of cones was another fifty... Rental and delivery of cones was another 50 and tables was 50. So that $200 fee could have been pretty, eaten up pretty quickly through all those add-ons. So this kind of makes it easier for someone applying that they know what they're getting. But it does increase it for taking up both Crapo and Dankwart and then the second day fee. For parks, it's a little different where your, for runs, you're oftentimes blocking access into the parks. So it's a little more limiting. We're not able to rent out shelters during that time. So those are, I guess, reserved separately. So that's why there's a higher fee in parks is because we're not seeing those potential for shelter reservations as well as access. Most special events not in city parks are generally open to the public. Sidewalks are still open. You can still get through the areas. So looking at a separate fee for those two. And then picnic tables, the fees did not change and park site rentals, they didn't change, just trying to make it a little more clear what those entail.
Very good. Any questions? Good. All right, number three, we have a resolution amending swimming lesson fees for Dankwart Park Pool.
So the group that, I guess, one thing with our contract for the pool bubble, part of that agreement said that that group can operate swimming lessons. So they had to bring forward lessons as approved by the city council, they shall be reasonably comparable to other local lesson fees. So that's within the contract, that language. This was their initial submittal, but they did have some more discussion and want to, I guess, pull this from the agendas at this time and bring it back at the following meeting. They had some concerns that this might be too high of a fee or the schedule. So they want to kind of revisit that and bring back an amended fee at the next meeting. So they asked that this not be brought forward to the council meeting and they'll be bringing back a kind of amended fee schedule, looking at some lower rates with some higher student to instructor ratios and having some different type of fee schedules. I think still having this three to one ratio, but also having a higher ratio where it's a lower fee.
Okay.
So that we not have this on the agenda for Monday.
All right, sounds good. Let's see, where are we at? Number four, we have a resolution approving reservation schedule for Dankwart Park Tennis Courts.
So the two school athletic directors met and they, I guess, put in writing what the schedule, tennis meet schedule is. And I guess the request would be to have these times be reserved specifically for them. The courts would not be open to the public during this time. As you can see, majority of these are during April. And it basically takes up four to, three to four to five days a week through meets all of April through this. Most of them are at four. There are two Saturday meets, those are invitationals, where both Burlington and Notre Dame play at those meets, but they're hosted by Burlington. But this would allow for these courts, since they are just public open courts, to be reserved during this time for their use.
The schools looking to do voluntary rotation on the other days?
They have come to an agreement on a voluntary rotation as well. I believe started today with Burlington practicing four to 5:15, Notre Dame 5:15 to seven. And then every other week, they have that change where the opposite school goes first. From March through May, and I think it ends on May 18th, but depending on postseason, if they qualify for state or district tournaments, how long that goes, that's kind of the optimal if everything goes well and they qualify through state. So with that, and with the meet schedule, I think it's, I don't know if it's like 15 days where each school has to practice late versus not late, roughly 15 to 20.
Well, I'm glad that they could work that out. Have we given any thought to fees, a fee schedule for their, both schools priority usage of the courts then, or no?
I think that was kind of for the discussion.
Okay, discussion item for later. Okay, thanks.
We don't have one at this time. We contemplated that.
All right, thank you.
All right, anything else? Good, okay. Number five, I have a resolution authorizing the City of Burlington to hold the Great River Bridge Race.
This is a requirement, or request or requirement from the Iowa DOT. We've held this race for over 20 years and worked with the DOT on an annual basis for closure of that lane of traffic. But this was the first year they asked that we give ourselves permission to actually do this. So this resolution is basically their template of what they want included, stating that the city authorizes the city to hold the bridge race.
Does it exclude you, Jim?
There is provision. We might make an amendment to.
To exclude Jim?
Or a 10-minute delayed start or something.
That would be Illinois that doesn't want me over there.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, sounds good. Looking forward to it. Number six, we have some set date for public hearings. We have a consideration of sale of a portion of North 7th Street right-of-way located west of the property locally known as 625 Valley Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions on April 2nd. Do we have anything now for that? No?
We don't typically do a review unless you wanted to.
I don't know if anybody had any questions yet. Okay, and next, we have a consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South 14th Street right-of-way located adjacent to the property at 1408 Harrison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa, for April 2nd. And C is a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 Tama Building permeable alley. That is on April 2nd. And then we also have a consideration of transit grant application on April 16th.
And we had started the process of setting the date on this before and we had a timing issue for making sure we had adequate public notice.
I remembered the process, but I forgot the process. You only do it once a year, but you have to have it noticed for 30 days, which is way different than anything else that we do. And so it has to go on the DOT website and you have to let private people be aware of it. And so that's the confusion in the date that I had set up before. I knew that I had to have it done by a deadline, but I didn't know what that deadline was. So that's the change.
You got a lot on your plate.
Sounds good. Next, a couple of discussion items. Presentation by GRMC Wellmark Grant slash Bike Racks.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Dr. Dave Carlson. I'm with the Family Practice Office. As long as we're poking fun at the mayor, I would say that I need an excused absence for not being in the office. So I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's why I'm just here to see you rather than you to see me. So anyway, Jake Tonemi-Harjo, I got it close, didn't I? And I heard it talk to you about a project that is underway. And we're not here to ask for your money, so that's a good thing.
We like you already.
It's part of a community needs assessment that has been ongoing and I think done every couple of years. The issue of obesity and diabetes was identified in our community. And several of us started meeting to talk about how we might address that. And we affectionately adopted the name Citizens for Active Transportation, or CFAT. We thought it was kind of funny, but the name stuck. So anyway, that, the group that has been working on this includes members of Bike Burlington, Jake, who's our community coordinator from the health system, Krista Pogemiller from Des Moines County Public Health, Eric Spindpart of it, and Zach James from regional planning. We started out, we were tasked with how can we get people moving better and increase our fitness level in the community? And biking and walking was the primary goal. And we looked at the, we started by looking at the bike and pedestrian plan. I don't know if you've looked at it recently, but it's from about 2013. And the thing that we were most impressed with is the majority of the items that were discussed then were quite expensive. And we don't have any money. We didn't have any money. And so we started to look at what could we do that was a relatively low-cost item that might serve as kind of a tipping point for getting people more active. And so you have, you actually have a map there and Jake will probably talk about that a little bit. But the other thing that we, the primary thing that we came up with was, what if we could get bike racks in the community that were all the same color? So uniformly colored, neutral, not purple, not dark green, but actually what we call active green, which is, let me see, I've got a picture of it here. And I think, do you have this, this one?
Yes.
Okay. So the bike racks that we're looking at are actually on the top there, that's the black thing that looks a little like a cross. But the color is the dark, is the green down below. And so we applied for a grant, and Jake's going to talk about that in just a minute, but, and we're successful in getting the grant. But the idea is to put some bike racks around the community, both in public areas as well as offer them to businesses at low cost. SCC has offered to help with painting through their auto painting program, to help paint some of the bike racks. Anybody basically that wants to have their bike rack painted, we're going to paint them all the same color. And so the idea is when people go to the grocery store or they go someplace and they see a bike rack, then they'll hopefully be motivated to say, you know, I might ride my bike next time. This really, it's, this sort of a project is for the bikers like Bike Burlington who bike on a regular basis. But as much as that, it's intended for people like me and maybe some of you who have a bike that we don't really use very much and we would like to start biking, but we come into all these kind of little obstacles. And I think the complete street concept, the putting of bike lanes, you know, this isn't going to happen overnight. But our intent is with the bike racks to help kind of serve as a tipping point, hopefully get people talking about all the places in Burlington and West Burlington that you can bike to. And so with that, I'm going to turn over the specifics to Jake.
Thank you for your time today. My name is Jake Tonemi-Harjo and I'm the community coordinator at River Medical Center. But I kind of see myself as a community employee at times to try to find ways that we can help complement some issues. And something that we discussed with Eric is that, you know, we'd love to help build bike lanes and build it out, but you can see that the cost of doing so for one mile is $1 million. So what can community members do to help with that? So we looked into a potential grant. It's called the Wellmark Foundation, matching assets to community health, or actually, is an acronym, is MATCH. And so we called our title project as Putting Obesity in Park, Improving Local Bicycle Infrastructure. And the thought here is that we just want to act as that tipping point and also to complement the existing projects that you all have planned. I know actually with the Tiger Grant coming into play, that bike racks are a part of the discussion too, but we just see this as an opportunity to kind of spur this process and get it moving. And from our perspective, what you can kind of see is I kind of put together a pretty basic idea of what our project looks like. We're breaking it into three phases and really highlighting some really opportunities that we use in data to support this. Our first phase is to install these bike racks in the downtown Burlington area. And if you look on the backside of your page, you can see a proposed map of these locations and there's about 40 of them that we've decided upon. And so we'll prioritize those first at the city's discretion as well. We understand that there are other projects that need to get finalized first, but we'll hopefully install those sometime this year. And these will be throughout the Burlington area, really centered around Jefferson Street. But that's just the start. We hope to, as our goals have been stated, to at least install 100 bicycle racks throughout the Burlington, West Burlington community and to also install cycle aid stations and a water fountain at North Gorge Trail.
Yeah!
So there you go.
There's never any drinking fountains that work. I'm very passionate about this project.
Well, thank you. I think that's a great opportunity to just highlight some of the great work that North Gorge has done in improving their area. And so we see this again, complementing existing projects. And so again, for phase one, is to install these active green bicycle racks, really focusing in the downtown area and potentially community parks. And phase two, we'll highlight some installation of cycle rescue stations. We've proposed four locations, including one at the Port of Burlington, another at the Recplex, one at the Big Hollow Flint River Trail area, and then another in the North Gorge hiking bike trail area. So again, giving the resources to those who need it and bringing it to it, all under the same color initiative, this active green color. We don't, we don't try and play sides here. We're just wanting to try to get people to attract to it, to see it, to know it. And then when they see that active green color, they'll know exactly they can park their bike. We need to do some work on just getting folks active, but this is just a good opportunity to just get folks engaged. This project also includes repainting, which Dr. Carlson brought up. And I think it's really important because we want to connect with these other existing projects. A really good example is the bicycle racks that are outside of the public library. And we've gotten tentative agreement from Ron de Frevert that we can go ahead and move forward and repaint those existing biking racks to match our initiative, but also just to kind of give them a nice touch-up too. We also have the same agreement in place with SCC, so we're really hopeful about how that can be done, to really spread this initiative, not just here in Burlington and not just in West Burlington, but really just start this conversation started for Southeast Iowa. So really, our two main objectives for this project is to really just, and to install these bicycle racks, these aid stations and the water fountain, and to really start this process of awareness and availability of these resources. Something that I want to just highlight too, is something that Dr. Carlson brought up, is just really act as a catalyst to support the existing projects that we have and to really get folks engaged with their health and getting out into the communities. So thank you for letting us chat about this. And if you have any questions, we'd love to have them or opportunities that we'd like to suggest or come forward with.
Have you had any discussions with the schools too, as far as the colors?
It's funny you bring that up. I have had some discussions with the Burlington School District and they'd like them to be purple. We are really steadfast in our color choice. I've had very short discussions with West Burlington School District and they're on board, or I should say, one principal is. And so we'll move forward with who wants to work with us. We are going to be really particular about this because we think it's the right thing to do with the connections. This particular color is not unique. It's actually really a color that you'll use, that you'll see very often in other communities to highlight bike racks, bike lanes. And so we just see this as an opportunity to start it here as well.
So I have questions on your little maintenance kiosks thing there. So I can tell there's a pump there. What else does it have?
It'll have a variety of tools that you can use to replace your bike. As you can see, those two rubber points at the top, you put your bike there and you can remove any tires on your bicycle and do some basic repairs if you have other equipment.
I'm not very good at maintenance, so I'll hire you to do the maintenance, but I'll use your system that looks nice.
That's why it's there, is to help engage and educate folks as well.
And I love your verbiage about the tipping point. There's so many people in this community sitting on that fence, so to use another expression. And if we make the healthy route the easy route, they're going to take advantage of it. So I am super psyched about this project.
Well, thank you. And I just did want to highlight figure C is the one on the backside. It does highlight just a basic map that Jared Lassiter put together from Southeast Iowa Regional Planning. This is not encompassing of all the bike racks that are available, but you can see that in some of our high, sorry, our high traffic areas, we are missing some basic infrastructure, especially in the downtown area. So we do see this as an opportunity not only enhance just getting people active, but just also enhance the beautification of our downtown.
It's interesting you put the schools in green on your map. Well done. I see what you did there.
Very good.
I did wanted to highlight two things I also shared with you. One is a recreation map that the group I'm working with, Des Moines County Living Well, put together. And again, part of this tipping point is to be knowledgeable of the opportunities that we have. So I shared this with you all, but I also have them available at the Welcome Center in a variety of locations to really highlight the wonderful opportunities that we have to offer here in Des Moines County and Burlington. And also to highlight a particular activity that's happening in our community for Southeast Iowa Regional Planning and Des Moines County Living Well, is an Active Transportation for Healthier Community Events. I implore all city planners, city organizations, elected officials and public works folks to take advantage of this opportunity. We'll be really kind of inviting a lot of different stakeholders from the region to learn about active transportation and those projects and how they help to improve community health and economic development.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Number two is the tennis court improvements funding.
This was put on the work session just as a discussion that had a couple of different council members who just were kind of wondering where do we head from here in regards to tennis courts? And so in order to do that, just throw it out here as a discussion topic to see where it is you want to head. This had been on, this was a project last year we had as a funded project with city funds in our five-year plan.
For Crapo Park.
And as we had less funding this year from local off and sales tax and hotel motel tax, it became one that the only way it was going to be a part of the funded projects list was with the participation arrangement that we'd... with the participation arrangement that we had presented from Burlington School District. Now that we're a spot beyond that, and how do we move towards the future? From a, from our perspective, it's just not a funded project. It may be one that, as we get into next year's budget cycle, from a staff perspective, you know, Eric's, looks at the funding sources he has, and he does reevaluate where things can fit, and whether there's a possibility for fitting it in, in some shape, form, or fashion. And so it's something that could come back next year at the budget cycle from a, a staffing perspective. But if the council was looking for a different answer, we can look at different alternatives. I mean, the ones that we would suggest, if you're saying that you wanted to see this as a pri- being prioritized over something that was on our, over another project that's on our CIP, we can go back and take a look at that. If you're, or I guess it's open again to your priority list as to how you want to try to address it.
Yeah, I, I'll plead guilty. I was one of the ones that asked about it. You know, my concern is, is that it's unfortunate that that agreement couldn't be worked out, but we still have the issue. And looking at the numbers that, that Eric provided, if we can spend a little bit now to save us a lot later, or, or to, to push that project, or eventual replacement down the, the road, I thought it might be worthwhile to have a discussion about it.
Well, I think it really brings up a couple, couple of issues. The, the first issue is A, do we prefer, or do we pursue the fee structure associated not only with tennis courts, but also the golf courts? I mean, any, any entity where somebody can come in and take priority over that entity for an extended period of time, I think is something that we should look into, but, but there needs to be fees associated with that. If you're gonna deprive the public of the use of that, that good, then, then you should pay for it, just as we have with the park, setting the park structures. If I want to reserve the gazebo, or if I want to set aside a shelter house at, at, at the park, I've got to pay for those things. So I think that's, that's step one. To me, step two then is reaching out to the schools and making them aware that this isn't funded right now. So if they want to have the ability to use these courts for an extended, in the future, then, then we would look to them to help us come up with the funding in order to maintain them. And, and I think we need to give them some time to do that. If they come back to us in October, if Notre Dame comes back and says, listen, we haven't taken the steps necessary in order to, to help with this project, and Burlington at that point is still willing to, to continue on with the project that they brought forth last week, then at that point, we, I would say that we move in that direction. If, if they come and say, listen, we've, we've taken the steps and, and we've raised X number of dollars to go towards this project, because really, they're the, they're the ones that, that I think in the long term are going to rely on those courts more than VHS. I mean, the athletic director said last week, they'll probably look to install new courts, not in the near future, but in the future. So eventually, they're gonna have new courts. It'll be Notre Dame will be the one that, that needs them. And like you said, they're not in our CIP here for the next five years. So at the end of the day, it's gonna benefit them more to come up with a, a plan to help fund this.
I just want to say I'm disappointed that we're having this conversation. This was all settled between the eighties, we had $50,000, and it got, sadly, it got sidetracked. So that's, you can call it sour grapes if you want, but I've spoken, now we have to move forward.
Are there any, have we looked into grants or anything like that?
Yeah, grants was part of our funding proposal through, through USTA grants. That was part of the city's match for the grant. I think it's up to 10,000 for the courts, so that was factored into the budget that we, we were hopeful or confident that we were gonna get that. But that's still with, left us $50,000 short from what our city funds were.
Right. Okay. I just, there's all, you know, I don't know what the, the search for grants is like, you know, who, I mean, no, we don't have, it's all, it's all on, you know.
Well, we, we do have, we do have funds coming from the manor sale, correct? Are those spoken for?
Yes and no.
Yes and no? Okay, good.
So the, the one project that you tentatively committed to last summer, which we don't really even have, we don't have an answer at this point for whether we need it, or whether we have a solution, is on the proposed of purchase and development of a couple of buildings in the downtown area. We'd looked at purchasing the railroad slot southwest of the fire department. If we could get that under a satisfactory lease arrangement, or a purchase, or land swap, there'd be the potential to develop parking in that spot to make those two proj- projects work.
What's the amount of that?
So they're look, they're, they're at a need for at least 100 slots. We, I think Jesse's drawing was about 110 in that parking lot, at a cost of about $650,000.
What was the amount of the last amount coming in?
So we have 1.2 million that's supposed to come in from the, in June for the second half payment on the manor site. Out of the other 550,000, if you set aside the 650 to, to meet that, and I'd say probably maybe a tad bit higher than that based on every other project that Jesse's been designing lately.
Oh, shoot. Look at the other city employees enjoy that one. Oh, man.
Jesse, would you like to come say something?
That's all right. I'm tired of the lot now.
Pack up that bus.
Sorry. Oh, no, I'm not.
Oh, gosh!
I think Nick needs a break.
Nick needs air.
To clarify, I am probably part of the reason for his miscalculations on some, but I'll take some of them.
He said 98%.
The $650,000 for the parking lot in Flint Valley included 140 spots with lighting and storm sewer and paving, so I would, to be safe, I would say probably better plan $700,000 just to cover engineering.
And it was done a year ago, and you're maybe looking at it the following year, so maybe a two-year cycle between, so that, you do need to have a little bit of flex in that.
Plus, purchase price of the property if you're not able to have that land swap go through.
On top of the 700.
On top of the...
Potentially.
Yes.
And, you know, some of that is, then you have to talk about a satisfactory lease arrangement on those spots, because you're wanting to be able to cover the cost on it. And we had told them there'd be, I mean, we look, we have a, a price structure in place for 24-hour spots now. We'd be looking at a premium on top of that. I'm not sure what that amount would be, but we let them know that for us to do something like that, it would involve that type of a premium to make us whole at the end of the So that's one, one piece. I think the other, the biggest significant other thing that, that needs to be thought through is helping us to transition through a potential loss of backfill, and then help us to transition through our, whatever our staffing response is as grants run out. Because we're, when we presented some different models for how you could make that happen, several of those relied on that funding to help make that occur. I would like to maintain as much as you, as we can out of that. If we could maintain the whole thing, I'd like to. If we don't have that funding, I don't know how we do that transition if we're trying to be any way responsible towards employees.
I think, I think we just, step one is come up with a fee structure. And then step two is communicate with the schools, let them know what our expectation is over the next few months, and, and see if they're able to come back in October and, and come up with some, or even sooner. And if, and if they can't, then I think we'll have to address it at that point. I don't know if I'd be in the favor of taking any of those funds and putting them towards 10.
And I think that, Eric, you, I know you've looked a little bit at what some other communities do for fees, but it's something that we'd want to put a little bit more time into.
No, and, and we're not just gonna shoot it off.
Well, yeah, and this would probably be unfair to ask Eric, but, but do we have a, do we have a fee structure for the teams that use the Flint Hills, the golf teams?
No, that's something we're developing as well.
Okay, okay. I, I, I just think protect us going forward, we need to have those, those plans in place, right?
I'd, I'd agree, and that money should, in my mind, be used to help maintain those over a longer period of time, but that's not gonna help us today, which is why I think we need to communicate with the schools. I, I'd rather see us take a majority of that money and to, put it towards like the, the additional Recplex project, just because I see us getting a better rate of return on that type of project than we do the, the parking lots down here, assuming, I mean, we have no idea if they're gonna go through at this point, but we've spoken to provide that to them, so we should, we should hold up our end of the deal.
I guess a couple of things with that, I know Eric's gonna be meeting with them this week, they're, they're on, they're wanting to close by the end of this month. Now, I imagine that there may still be some concerns on their part on what happens at a state level with the state historic tax credit, and I haven't been following that bill.
I haven't seen any updates on it.
So it wasn't in this last week's update, so I don't know exactly where that stands or potential for losing that. And it's one that, I don't know, it'd probably be good, Eric, if you could at least get some questions asked of them as to where they see that fitting within their plans. But they are still moving forward.
Okay. It's too bad we couldn't build a walkway over the railroad tracks, because there's 50-some parking stops, or spots that are never used on, on Fifth Street when you go on the other side, the south side of the tracks. But trains, trains happen. Anyway.
Anything else on that? I don't know.
We, I mean, I don't, it's, we don't have another pot of funds to, to go, to go to.
I, I, you know, I would, I brought it up, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with those answers, but I think we do have some stuff that we need to work on going forward. The fee structure is, is, would definitely be number one for both the tennis courts or any, any facility like that, the golf courts, or the golf course. And, God, got courts on the mind now. But, you know, I, I just think we ought to, the reason I wanted to bring it up is I at least wanted to talk about it and, and see where we're at, so. Matt's got a good idea, maybe we can work with the school systems and work out something, because this is going to be an issue for a few years for them, even if VHS decides they're gonna build new courts, it's gonna be five, six years.
It's not gonna get any better, so eventually the courts are gonna be unusable for even them.
Right, exactly.
We'll be in worse shape than we are today.
So maybe we can get them both to partner up and help us, and the three of us will get it done, or the three groups.
I'm confident that if we continue to do what we're doing in this community with a lot of the things available to us from a grants program, grant structures, or going out and able to leverage money, that there's the potential there in the near future to come up with something that can help us on that end, but we don't know what that is yet, so.
Yeah, I know there's, I mean, if there was some sort of tennis group out there...
There is, the US, US Tennis Association is, is actually probably one of the grants that I think Eric's talking about. What was the size of their grant?
I was thinking from like a, a community group going after those grants, because there are, I mean, whether it's going after a big corporation, Nike, I mean, there's, every, every organization has to give away so much money a year, so it's just a matter of finding the right one that can, that can donate, or not donate, but do the grant. But I don't know if there's any local organization that focuses, you know, like a tennis club, that kind of thing.
I know, I know someone that's an alum of Notre Dame, said they have those track or something that they don't use. They suggested maybe they could build their own courts, but that probably wouldn't be profitable for...
Yeah, I definitely think that we need to work with the schools more hopefully, get that on track. I don't know if that gives you enough direction, or if that was vague enough for you to...
It was vague enough.
Vague enough.
What do you need, Jim? What do you need from us?
He needs a decision.
Fee structure. There you go. Fee structure.
That's what, that's what we're working on.
Okay.
And I know that Eric has continued to work with the two eighties, and I assume we'll be, as time moves on here.
Yeah.
I mean, this is always something that can change in a matter of weeks, and we can bring it back up when time's necessary, if necessary, so.
Sounds good.
I'm fine with where it's at right now.
All right. Is everyone satisfied? Okay, great. Okay, we have appointments. Let's see, does anyone have any issues? We just have the one appointment.
There was a reaplement, wasn't there?
Oh.
Wasn't there a reaplement?
Yep, there's a lot of reapairments actually. Do we need to, are we all good with those?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. And any, anything else? Can I, can I, can you help? You good?
I'm good.
Closer down early.
You're good?
Great.
Great. What are you doing?
Look how fast things go in the morning.
It's like a race between the two of us.
Main Street will be closed at the railroad tracks for the next couple of days, starting tomorrow around noonish. BNSF will be ripping up the pad there and doing some work. So they, they're supposed to be done by Thursday at noon, but I would just plug on Tuesday through Thursday, those tracks being unock, or unavailable to go across, so. And then Valley Street, as you noticed, the Burlington's got some scaffolding up, they are planning to do some work on the side of their building. They may need to close off half of Valley Street, so you may see some restrictions down there as well. And then Agency Street, they will be tearing out the driveway at Jimmy John's sometime this week, or at least starting to do some work there, so. And the reason for the stop sign in the middle of that intersection is they had some electrical issues with the new stoplights, so.
It's one of these days. All right. Thank you.
Radio.
What day?
Was it Wednesday?
Wednesday, 9:00 AM.
I can do it. I can do it. Matt and I?
All right.
Anybody, you want in?
I'm trying to think what I'm doing on Wednesday. You guys go ahead.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I would point out, some, you may have heard, we got a Tiger Grant?
Yes.
So I don't know when we're gonna receive any paperwork on that, or really a whole lot of update, but when we do, we'll get it on the agenda. Charlie is gonna be meeting on Wednesday with B&amp;K engineers, or the ones who had submitted the Tiger Grant, coordinated getting that in. It ties off of the work that they've been doing on the flood wall, which is why, I mean, you see how well coordinated it is with that. It was all based off of how do we take additional components that came out of that original work? That's work that's scheduled to be done not necessarily this year, it's more next year and the, and the year after, that I think the majority of the Tiger awarded funds and projects that are associated with it will be done. So it's, you have some time yet before that occurs, but we will be getting to make sure that the vision that we submitted, what adjustments need to be done, and they are done over the next probably six to 12 months before we get anything out.
Thank you. Congratulations to staff and previous council.
I was, I was in on the steering committee for that, and knowing the number of projects down there that are gonna be able to be completed as a result of that, is that Riverfront's gonna be a complete transformation for us today.
And we will have a little bit of flexibility in how some of that funding is spent, but it has to be right in that area.
I think some consumers don't understand that. They think that we just have this big pot of money, and can't we help them pay for their sidewalk and their garage siding, and, no, it has to be specified that it's, so. I think there is some, on clarity with that.
Yeah. So, and I don't have anything, oh, both Nick and I will be going up to a conference in Iowa City Wednesday through Friday, so the two of us will be out of the office, both available, at least I'll be available by phone and email.
I'll be available on Wednesday mornings.
Yeah. So we can be reached, I guess that puts Stephanie in charge.
I was gonna say, who's gonna manage the city?
That's it, though.
Okay. I got a couple things. All right, I got a couple things. I just noticed that we, there's finally going to be a ribbon cutting ceremony with Ashley. And then of course, Brown Shoes is having their ribbon cutting on March 15th. And then of course, everyone be safe this weekend. St. Patrick's Day happens to fall on a Saturday, so be safe yourself and watch out for everyone else, because sometimes it's not you you have to worry about.